Dr. Cynthia Gutierrez, how you doing doctor?
Good, I'm doing very well.
That's awesome, you look great.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so welcome to the show. You're running for PSJA with reelection, PSJA School Board Place Seven.
Yes, sir.
Yes, when is that happening or what's going on with that? Is there, are you, do you have somebody, you're, you're the incumbent, obviously you're reelection, right?
Yes.
How long have you been doing that?
So I've been on the PSJA School Board for four years. Uh, so I'm running for reelection, this is my fourth year. Uh, it's uh, this election is, goes along with the general election. So uh, the, the early voting starts on the twenty first of October, ends the first of November, and then Election Day on the fifth. So basically, we're running with um, everyone else uh, that's running for judge, for president, you know, vice president, all of those positions.
See.
So unfortunately, our position, the school boards are all the way down to the uh, the ballot. So you know, I want to encourage people to vote all the way down because at times, I know that uh, at this time, you know, a lot of people are gonna go one way or another uh, for Kamala or for um, Donald Trump.
Uh huh.
But uh, it doesn't stop there. You know, we have to make sure that people go out and vote for all of the positions. Because you know that our county is one that could be very powerful, but only ten, twenty percent of the population go out and vote.
That's right.
So it's unfortunate because um, what I tell people at the end of the day, we're not represented. Because uh, whenever, you know, and I'm gonna put it in layman's terms. Uh, whenever people in uh, Washington or at the state level are looking at us, I mean, they're politicians, they're gonna see, you know, the impact that, any decision that they make, you know, um, for better or worse, uh, what impact it's gonna have in their reelections and, you know, their funding and for their campaigns. And so if we don't vote, we're not represented because nobody's scared, you know, about ten percent, you know, uh, vote. Nevertheless, we could have big power. And so I want to tell people, go vote and go all the way down to the ballot, vote every single one. Because uh, we are impacted by the national um, uh, politics, but we're more impacted by the local ones.
See, it all starts from the bottom up, yeah.
So uh, school boards, city elections, uh, when you talk about county, the judges, you know, all of those things really affect us. Um, as much probably or more than the, the bigger elections.
What are your, what is your take on our education system here in the United States of America? And locally as well, um, is it where it should be or?
No.
I mean, uh, are, are there a lot of students that, I mean, I know COVID was uh, you know, it really threw a wrench into a lot of kids that, you know, they couldn't finish school. And then they came back and some of them have a, a little disabilities about it because they, you know, they went through that trauma of being locked up uh, with COVID. And also they missed out basically on a year because when they were doing the teaching from online with the teachers at home virtually.
Or hybrid.
The kids weren't as invested as they would be in the class. So i- is it taking a lot of time to like, kinda get back to where we were pre-COVID?
You know, I think uh, education is at a point where uh, we have to make good decisions. Uh, education took a big toll during COVID. Nevertheless, you know, there has been challenges for many, many years, funding, uh, the standardized testing, um, the um, uh, the way that schools are funded, you know, through attendance. Uh, there's a, there's a lot, there are a lot of challenges. And COVID just added to all those problems. Because we already had uh, in, in school districts, esp- especially rural areas or uh, areas that are marginalized, like uh, for example, our area, and when you talk about all the uh, social determinants of health and, and all of the disparities in education and everything, we have everything here. You know, and uh, so we're behind. And COVID came to aggravate the situation. And so there's, there's gotta be a revolution, there's gotta be some change, going to the basic, back to basics. Uh, at times I feel that we overwhelmed the teachers with software, new software, new programs, new trainings. And every time you introduce them to a new project, uh, program that they need to use with the students, it, it comes with all of these trainings and all of these um, uh, handouts and all of this learning. And so the teachers are overwhelmed, the students are overwhelmed. At PSJA, in the past few years, we have adopted uh, sustainability. So it's kind of going to the way that people that are not our age, that are older, because we're very young. At twenty-five years old.
I feel great.
Yes, I, I do too. So you know, but going back to basics uh, where um, you did hands-on learning. We didn't have uh, as much technology, you know. So uh, PSJA has adopted sustainability and it has been during the, the four years that I have been there. I've been very supportive of that, uh, not only through uh, through the school district, but also through, through the jobs that I've had, you know, during that time. And I feel that sustainability, it's a great way to go back. Because uh, the children are being, are, are using uh, their, their uh, social skills. They're using their hands-on, their, their hands-on in projects. For example, some of the schools have chicken uh, uh, coops. So the children go out and, and they pick up eggs and they're able to cook them in the classrooms. And, but they're able to see, you know, the animals and, and you know, everything that comes with that, learning.
A lot of organic type of learning, yeah.
Exactly, and so it's easier for them to grasp and to understand and internalize it and be able to, to make inferences and to use it when they test. Uh, we have gardens, we have several gardens, the children go out and cultivate all kinds of fruits and vegetables. And then they're able to, to share them, uh, they're able to eat them. Uh, so every school has different things, but uh, it's going back to basics. Education right now, it's very, very challenging. And one of the challenges is to keep teachers that have experience and there's, that have specialized uh, um, education to stay in the field. Because it's uh, underpaid, I mean, it's a reality.
Yeah.
And uh, and, and it's uh, overwhelming, especially uh, a classroom teacher. Because in education, you have obviously different um, administrative, uh, support positions. But teachers have a great challenge in front of them. And so you know, one of, one of the things that I have advocated for in the past four years is bringing about fair wages for, for your, uh, for our teachers. And so um, I have spoken uh, publicly to our superintendents and you know, the two that have been there and uh, and to the public where we have to take care of our teachers, make sure that they, that they stay. You know, um, we at times give uh, higher salaries to new teachers, but we forget that the seasoned teachers are leaving the profession. You know, and, and yeah, we wanna bring in good uh, new teachers and, and keep them, but we also wanna keep the good ones.
Well, you need them as mentors to, yeah, you need them as mentors uh, to, for the, for the younger teachers as well. But uh, yeah, there, there's been a, a big turnover rate in teaching right now with teachers?
Yes, and during the pandemic, uh, especially, and, and I don't think, you know, we can talk about education and I think it's in every field. I used to work as an epidemiologist for Hidalgo County Health Department. And I think in, in every field, um, people were overwhelmed, you know, with this, especially in our area, which was one of the most affected in the country, you know, and, and mortality. And so I think uh, we are barely, barely, as we come out of the pandemic, um, we're barely starting to grasp and starting, starting to look at what the outcome of those three years of severe COVID are gonna be. I don't know how it's gonna look in ten, fifteen, twenty years, are we gonna have generations of people with mental health problems? You know, children that did not, were not able to bond with their moms because they were born during the pandemic. And so they were not able to, to have the same bonding experiences that, that normal uh, children or children that were born um, during uh, outside of the pandemic have had. And you know, research shows that, you know, children, especially very young children, uh, the first two, two, three years, four years, you learn everything that you're gonna need for the rest of your life. So if you were not able to socialize, if you did not develop those skills, if you were not able to develop relationships with your teachers, you know, in person, um, that's concerning. And also, I was learning, I was reading today, something that we're not even thinking about, AI, artificial intelligence.
It's coming.
Yeah, I read an article uh, that said, you know, are they gonna replace our tutors? And it's only talking about tutors, but it got me thinking. Is it something that could replace teachers, you know? So to add to, to their plate, you know, the, the worry about all this technology that uh, that is being implemented and that it's coming and that it is here, you know? And uh, and I don't wanna uh, sound like a tin uh, hatter, right?
A tinfoil hat, no, but it is coming, I mean, we have to, we have to acknowledge that uh, we're going really fast with this technology to a point where, I mean, how do we know if the kids are at school, at home, doing their homework, not using Google or ChatGPT?
Correct.
To write their essay or to, you know, so teachers have to really know how to be able to distinguish. And a lot of teachers, they know their students already, right? They'll know, okay, this is a little too good, right?
I know, because we have a voice when we write.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't sound like Juanito.
Yeah, so.
It's very challenging, uh, we have uh, uh, the mental health issue that comes from COVID and you know, from, from the pandemic and uh.
Is there a lot of that right now? I mean, are kid, were kids really, really affected that?
Yes, and uh, kids and adults, you know, I can give you personally, um, the last year that I was at uh, Hidalgo County as uh, epidemiologist, um, there was, I, I, I have this incident so, you know, clear in my mind because they send us a survey, you know, to, to all of the health departments in, in the state, the Department of State Health Services on, you know, how you were feeling and you know, how you, you were dealing with, with stress. And this was, I, I, it must have been like uh, this, at the end of second or third year of, of uh, the pandemic. It was not at the most severe uh, times. And I remember that I was answering and then all of a sudden, I, I was crying. And, and I thought, you know, if, if I've always considered myself to be strong and I've never dealt with uh, real mental issues, you know, chemical imbalances and such, uh, imagine what it did to people that already had problems. You know, just, just think about that. If we were affected and, and I found with a survey, crying, um, I had coworkers who were looking for, for different things because they were, they wanted to try something else that, that didn't have, um, that didn't have anything to do with healthcare or with uh, with infectious illnesses and, and, and all that. So, so of course it, it had a big impact. And so that's why the government uh, put so much money into social emotional, the SEL that has become so, so um, uh, talked about in the past couple of years. Because they wanted to make sure that there were uh, funds to deal with, with all of that stress. And so you know, uh, it's, it's something that, that it's, that is important. And again, we don't know how that, this generation of children are gonna be in thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting. And uh, you know, every child has a different dynamic at home. Some parents are more involved than others, uh, and some parents just don't care uh, about the, the kids, you know, education. Uh, so how, how do you, how do you combat that? How do you get parents that aren't, that aren't wanting to be
Involved.
Involved and, you know, and with their child's education, huh, does?
Um, and I wanna say uh, back in the eighties, I wanna say eighty-six, eighty-seven, PSJA had parent volunteers. And so um, these parent volunteers were recruited to form the first parental involvement program in the nation. And so it started at PSJA, um, they started doing kind of like what we call now peer education. So mothers that were uh, doing uh, parental involvement, started educating other moms on communication. They would themselves get trained um, on um, you know, all kinds of issues and how to be involved in the, in, in, you know, the education of children. So PSG has always been a strong advocate for parental involvement. Um, I feel that in the past ten years, not only at PSG, but I think everywhere, um, I have felt that the doors to parents are kind of closed. You know, uh, especially with the advent of, of technology, where everyone is recording you, everyone, you know, um, there's, there's fear uh, everywhere that anything you say can be misconstrued and used against you, not in a court of law, but in the court of public opinion.
Yes, yeah.
I think sometimes.
I mean, there's even some Facebook pages that, you know, dedicate themselves to, to, you know, talking smack or, yeah.
Right, to one person. And so um, we're fortunate that PSG still has that strong parental in- involvement component. Uh, we have uh, different types of classes, uh, uh, GD, you know, citizenship and, and uh, PSG has a partnership uh, with uh, Consulado de Mexico. And so they have uh, uh, the uh, la Secretaria de Educación Pública from Mexico has some classes to help um, um, especially people that have come from Mexico, even if they're already residents, citizens, they can finish their education here. And all of that is done to attract the parents, uh, as well as, you know, all of these uh, array of uh, of events that invite parents to come, you know, with their children, you know, donuts with uh, dad and.
Mm-hmm, muffins for mom.
Yes, a traditional, uh, you know, now there's more of uh, uh, dances for the mom with the son and the dad with the daughter, you know? And all of those things do attract. Unfortunately, there are cases that the parents are not gonna get involved uh, regardless. But the good news is that schools have um, uh, most of the times, and I would hope that it, it's everywhere, support systems where you can, you can um, find these children and help them. That's why I believe that education is so important and the teachers are so important. Because at times, there are teachers that become your parent. There are teachers that become the parent you don't have involved. And we hear the stories everywhere, all these famous, rich people, and I'm like, darn it, mom, why were you involved? Right, could I not have a teacher, you know, that did that? But, but it's a reality, there are teachers who become the parent that.
The mentor.
Yeah, that they need. And uh, and at times unfortunately, because there's also um, a big, um, as we see right now with national news, there's a big problem with uh, with uh, abuse, with um, you know, um, children being sold and, you know.
Human trafficking, child trafficking, all that stuff, yeah.
And so um, there are cases where the schools can detect that, you know, be, because of, you know, whatever um, demeanor the child has or, you know, situations. And so um, I think it's important to know that uh, many times, teachers become that necessary parent that even though um, the parent is not gonna get involved regardless, doesn't matter if you bring them, if you invite them, if you, you know, whatever you give them, they're not, it's a, a fact of the matter is they're not gonna get involved. For whatever reason, for whatever cycle they're carrying. And that's why um, I also think education is important. Because it can be the, the, the one thing that changes the life and the cycle.
The cycle, yeah.
You know, of poverty, abuse, you know.
It's been known as a fact to do that for many, yeah. And even single parent homes, they become, you know, successful and, and productive. Um, we're, the immigration thing, you know, it's, it's really gotten out of hand in the United States. How has that affected as uh, the school system as far as, has it made it more challenging for the teachers? Uh, has it uh, created a big influx of students uh, that are non-English speaking, uh, cause?
We're, we live in an area that, where more than eighty percent of the population speaks Spanish.
Mm-huh.
And a lot of, we, we do have a lot of influx from uh, students that come not only from Mexico, but Latin America.
Saying South America.
Yes, exactly.
And even Africa and some, I know there's some students.
Correct.
In the local districts.
Yes, and uh, and, and so that, but that has, because we're a border uh, town or a border area, it's always been the case. You know, um, I was born in East Chicago, Indiana, as I was telling you, uh, you know, Midwest. But I was raised in Mexico until I was sixteen. We came back to the US, went to school. And uh, and, and that's why, to me, is very important. Regardless of whether we have a lot of students or we don't have a lot of students uh, that speak Spanish, our school district has always been a dual-language um, uh, school district. And so it, PSG was one of the school districts where um, the dual-language program started. You know, all of the research was done there and uh, you know, they implemented. And uh, and times have changed. At the time, uh, and, and perhaps it's something that in the future will be reviewed. Because at the time, uh, you would come from another country and you, you needed a, a second uh, or bilingual classroom or some type of help to learn the language. Um, now, and, and this is something that I've been thinking about for the past two years. There are children, little kids that just came from, from Mexico, from, you know, uh.
South America.
Yes, a Spanish-speaking um, area. And they learn English with their tablets, with their mom's cellphone.
Rosetta Stone.
Yes, they're, the Hoover's at a stone.
Uh huh, yeah.
And so um, regardless of that, the program, dual-language program is important because we have a lot of hatred going on here in, 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 in all of the United States and the world, you know? We have become a very fast uh, society. You know, we want everything fast because TikTok and everything that we get on our phone is, you, you get immediate information, you get immediate gratification. And so we have become a uh, society where we want everything, everything at our fingertips, we, we want everything fast. And so I think it's, it's, it's very important that we continue to teach uh, in, in both languages, especially in this area that, that there's so much, so many people um, speaking Spanish. Because we have many children who are being, because of what you mentioned of parents not getting involved, uh, there are many children that are being raised by grandparents, by uncles, by aunts, you know, they, they're dropped off at uh, mom, uh, their uncles or grandparents and they never see their mom or their dad again. You know, they just go and do, you know, continue with their lives and they leave them behind. Uh, many times these grandparents don't speak the language. And so how do you expect uh, for a grandparent to know what's going on with a child if they can't communicate? And so it also helps because if you speak two languages, you're able to communicate with more people. But also you're able to understand the culture, you know, you're able to, to understand where a lot of these, uh, a lot of the thinking or the conversations from this other person come from. And I think the children become more acceptable of um, or uh, um, they, they become more adept at dealing with uh, with new people, with people that, that are different, you know?
And it also creates uh, uh, high-paying opportunities upstate, you know?
Exactly.
I know they, they want bilingual teachers.
Yes.
Um, but uh, I was also going to ask you about uh, you know, that you mentioned about the tablets and the phones. I spoke with a, with a former algebra teacher, high school algebra teacher. And uh, he was, he had just retired and he told me, nombre rock este, it's really bad now. I mean, he said, uh, I remember when in my class I could tell that one student that didn't belong there. And now I can only tell that one student that does belong there. And I said, well, what's the deal? He goes, I can't get them off their phones. So what, what kind of, what, what can the school district do to like, kinda combat that? Even though, I mean, because I know the phones are also creating a very short-term uh, memory as well.
I was telling you that it's really fast.
Yeah.
Capacity.
The attention span.
Yes, to keep information is really fast, like it, it's.
Bombardment, it's a bombardment of information.
Creating um, children and adults that cannot deal or cannot solve problems. We're losing our ability to solve problems.
Thinking.
Yes, and uh, common sense and all those things where, because it's, it's right there. And, and uh, there's, um, I have seen um, a lot of uh, pictures and, and graphics showing, you know, how it's eating your brain, and I saw it on my phone, which is ironic, but it is.
Yeah.
It is a big problem, technology is eating us alive, you know, there. Uh, sometimes I get up in the morning and the first thing you do, you know, is.
Grab your phone, yeah, I mean.
Did I get any calls?
You're at a stoplight, you grab your phone.
Second, let me go see how many likes I have on Facebook.
So, so we're basically in the same boat, but they're in class and they're trying to learn and the teacher's trying to teach them. I remember the story once, uh, I, I don't like to think I've ever said that my daughter, uh, she was going to school and I was paying for her phone. And uh, I would get all the, the text information. And so during the summer, there'd be like two hundred texts, during school, two thousand texts. So I was like, I asked her, are you texting all day in school? Because during summer it slowed down and during the school it went up.
The other way around.
Yeah, so that told me that my daughter was on, on, on her phone most of the day. Uh, but uh, but.
And that's challenging for the teachers.
What can we do about that?
I was a teacher thirteen years ago. And at the time, um, thirteen years ago, I mean, we had cellphones, but there, it was not as, um.
It wasn't a computer, it was a, it was a flip phone.
And so I remember there was this little game called um, four pictures, one word. And I recreated that for, you know, to, to play with the children, with the students and, and, but at the time, students would still pay attention. And so it's, it's really challenging because you also have, uh, it has become a babysitter, unfortunately. So if I wanna be on my phone, you know, I'd rather have my child on his phone so that he doesn't bother me. And so uh, you know.
That's what it is.
I'm sure that you've heard, people say, well, but it's my, my first uh, amendment right to, you know, to have um, uh, to communicate and, you know, and to people.
Yeah.
So you know, it's, that's another challenge.
But man, I mean, the parents, uh, they're as invested into their social media, digital life as the kids are that, so much so that they, they disregard what the child. I remember I was at a restaurant and I was eating with my wife and we're having lunch and, or it was breakfast and I, a couple showed up with their daughter, she looked about eight years old and they were sitting across over there in a booth. And the, both the couples, you know, the dad and mom were on their phone and the little girl was just sitting there by herself, not saying anything, no. I felt like telling her, mi hija, vente para acá, vamos a hablar, vamos a platicar. I mean, it, it was sad to me, you know, but it's, it's gonna be very interesting and you can't take their phones away because they get, even a friend of mine that was managing a, a restaurant, he said, I can't get my employees off their phone. A uno le dije, sabes que, déjame el phone aquí, ya te dije, le estamos dando de comer a esta gente y no puede estar mal. So pay attention, dame tu teléfono, no, I'm not gonna give, entonces, you're fired. He left, he didn't care.
You know, there are places that, there's this pledge called, I, I can't remember, um, I, I think it's not till eight or um, so parents pledge not to give cellphones to their children until they're in eighth grade. But I mean, it's, it, it hasn't taken off, obviously, you know? Because uh, there's also the other argument about safety. You know?
Yeah.
Parents want the children, you know.
They can, they can get anything on the phones.
Right, uh, but the other part is um, we grew up, or at least I grew up without school shootings. You know, it, it was unheard of. And more and more every day, we hear, you know, uh, unfortunately, uh, those types of, types of tragedies. And, and parents um, also worry about their kids. And, and, and I think uh, there's also that argument where, well, my child has a phone so they can call in case there's any.
Any problems, yes.
And so.
They want that connection.
Correct, but at the same time, it's a vicious cycle. Because at the same time, it's eating away at your child's brain. And then if you don't know what's going on and, and more, most of the time, even though we think we know what's going on, we really don't. Because, you know, they're very good at hiding and so there's a lot of bullying. And all of that bullying has been in, behind most of the, the, the shootings. So it's mental health issues that come from not in, the inability to deal with uh, with the bullying, with all the, those attacks at a young age. Because I mean, if, if as an adult, when somebody's putting stuff about you, you know, it hurts and, 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 you know, and, and.
And then as a child, it's a little, they don't know the.
And you, you.
That defense mechanism.
Correct, you, you, your brain is not fully developed. Uh, the hormones, depending on what age, you know, they're, they're, you're going through, you know, all of these changes and, and uh, and you're not able to deal with, with that. And, and it's so predominant, you know, um, in schools through the, you know, the phones. You hear it all the time.
Social media, it's crazy. I remember when there was a, this rumor went rampant on social media, I don't know, it was about fifteen years ago maybe, Facebook was barely starting out, that clowns were gonna kidnap the kids. And ev- the, the schools were crazy. All the families, all the parents picking up their kids because they were gonna be kidnapped by clowns. I was like, are you, what's going on?
You know, and.
I was like, this.
And we forget that every time there's a, um, and hopefully it's always a prank and that never a real situation. But every time there's a prank, you know, where we're gonna do this to the school and we're gonna do that. Uh, kids and, and people forget that there's all this mobilizing that happens in the schools. You know, waste of resources that if, God forbid, there was ever a real situation, you know, we have the police and everyone responding to something that it's um, a prank, where at the same time, something real could happen.
Yeah.
And the resources that you, that you waste, uh, because we have to call the, whatever city, the police and, and get them involved. And so, but also, you know, um, as parents, we also have become, we're accelerating the, the, the growth of our children. You know, I see little girls, three, four years old, already with highlights and makeup and little heels and, you know, their bodies are not developed yet to use heels to, you know, um, and, and I think, I'm not criticizing the, the dressing or the makeup and I think we're accelerating. You know, I'd, um, I, I was joking with a friend the other day, we were fifteen, we were still playing with Barbies. You know, the, the, the little girls at three or four, they don't want Barbies anymore, you know? They, they want a cellphone, they want a purse, they want, you know, uh, because social media has made this image of perfection. You know, so widespread that um, our little girls, our young boys are not able to uh, accept themselves. You know, the way they are and this creates a big, big issue and, you know, with their mental health. Because more and more young, uh, especially. young, especially young teens asking for, you know, all kinds of surgeries. You know, plastic surgery.
Yeah, yeah, the lips and all that.
Injections, yes, you know, you, you, you look at young girls and they're seventeen, eighteen, and they look like they're thirty. You know, they they look like.
And we don't know the long term effects of that either as well.
And then forgetting about, you know, being harassed or, you know, looked at. You're just accelerating, you know, skipping all of this, their childhood, their teenage years, you know, that they should be enjoying. And 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 we're maturing them very fast.
But it's interesting because we didn't have to live through that when we were kids. So another thing, back when we were going to school, I don't ever remember kids being on meds and stuff like that. Is that a big thing now? Are there a lot of kids? What's like, what's the percentage of the children that are on meds in in the PSJ school district?
I don't know percentages, I'm gonna be really honest. And then I'm gonna take this opportunity, you know, I'm gonna do a commercial and and train everyone on what a school board member should be doing and 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 their duties. So school board members have three jobs. We hire a superintendent. We take care of and and manage the budget and write policy or ordinances, you know, all that. And so.
Rules and laws.
Yes, exactly, you know, and and just in general oversee the school district. But we cannot, there's something called governance, and we cannot directly get involved in the daily operations of, you know, of the schools. So everything that we need or that we feel that needs changing has to go through the superintendent, you know, and so there inherently and empirically, I can, I can, I can probably say there's a lot of children compared to when, you know, twenty five years ago, we grew up, but.
They would, corporal punishment was what it was called back then, the meds. And it worked a little bit on me.
But in in the, in the effort to bring more freedom to, you know, and and rights to the students, we also have lost a lot of respect. You know, I have a friend who, when I was a teacher thirteen, fifteen years ago, she came from the Philippines. And she had a hard time with her classes. She was a physics teacher. To begin with, physics is hard, you know. But she had a hard time because back in the Philippines, she was used to the student, to the students being respectful and wanting to be there and learn and, you know, and it was a big culture shock for her, because she felt that that the students were disrespectful all of the time. You know, it can be cultural, but yeah, that has changed a lot from when we go, when we went to school. You know, the the respect that you had for teachers, you know, we, I don't remember, it was very, and and even fifteen years ago, you know, twenty years ago, kids were more respectful of their teachers.
Because if we weren't, we were gonna go home and they were gonna, you know, discipline us. And I don't know if that happens anymore, porque there's some parents that'll say. It's you, you know, whatever.
I deal with him at home, you deal with him at school, you know, and and it's still your child. You know, whether, you know.
But you know, a lot of times, like, we're going back to the meds, you know, give him some meds, it'll mellow him out. And, you know, I I I've told my wife, like, I I wonder if I would have done everything I did with my life, if they would have put me on meds, because she says I'm ADHD. So, you know, I do lose focus sometimes because I'm thinking of all kinds of things. I'm writing stuff, because, you know, I'm thinking of what I want to ask and then I forget because I'm listening to you. And then I think of something else, yeah.
My son tells me, Mom, you're always chasing the rabbit.
Yeah.
Because it's like, and and I asked him, well, what do you mean by chasing the rabbit? He's like, you're talking and then like, like a dog or a cat, you see a rabbit and you, you're running already behind the rabbit. And I do that all the time. So I think about it. I'm very hyper and I once, a teacher told me once that I had a scattered brain. So I don't know if that means it's it's all over the place, but I get constantly told, you know, I have, I always have a lot of things going on, a lot of things that I'm working on at once.
But that makes you goal oriented. You set goals and you wanna reach them. And sometimes you'll get an effect, you know what I mean?
Right. You know, I don't know if that nowadays, it's easier to write prescriptions. As a matter of fact, I was talking about not mental health medications, but in general. I was talking to somebody this morning, we were doing enrollment for insurance. And the person that I was talking to, you know, we were talking about the same, the same topics we're discussing and 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 I was telling him, one of my biggest pet peeves, especially with my mom and and family is like. And then it's like, okay, so what did they tell you? You have, the doctor said, you know, I just have some kind of virus. And and so they give you antibiotic, like dating test, and so I I feel that as parents, you know, as patients, we should be asking questions, going to the schools, who's educating my child? You know, what is going on? And so that's something that I have done as a board member. I have been very transparent. It bothers some people, because I ask a lot of questions. But I think that's the job of any, any, any elected official. You know, you're elected to be the voice of people and you're elected to ask the hard questions that are not gonna make you popular. That may not get you reelected, but you have to ask those questions, because you have to ask, where's the money going? You know, is it going to, where it's intended, the children and the teachers, you know, and the staff? Is it, if we don't see any changes in the 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 or any improvement in the education and the academics of the students, then are we doing our job as elected officials? And so I'm very transparent about that. I think we need to ask questions, the parents need to ask questions, patients need to ask questions. But again, we have become a society, you know, I just wanna go in and out from the doctor, even though you wait for like. Ah, you wanna take a pill, dog, you know, the child is.
I gotta get back on social media, come on, let me sign this up.
Exactly. And so, so, you know, it's, it's.
We're living life too fast.
I was telling you without even this, remember when when we were walking in, that I told you that I was thinking earlier? You know, I used to have a lot more time for me, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. You know, and the more back I go, even though I was younger, I had more time for me than now. Like I feel that every day, I wake up and it's already time, you know, the day is over.
You know why? Because we're ADHD. We like to fill up our plate more than it it can have.
Correct. You do the work of three or four people.
Yeah, I mean, I've I've got like four or five different things going on right now, projects, yeah.
Money, you wanna bring funding, alright, grand.
And as we do all that, our, our, you know, recreational time just shrinks and shrinks.
Correct.
You know, but either way, I mean, we gotta stay busy. Because if we don't, then our bodies start telling us we're old, you know what I mean?
I joke with my husband, because I tell him that the house smells like a pharmacy nowadays.
Mi presión, era como tal mi presión, ciento veinte arriba de ochenta y seis.
You used to go to parties and talk about, you know, the things that you did and now it's like, it's like a competition. Yeah, and earlier, I I couldn't tell you outside of, when we were not in in the air, the story of the position that I'm running, place seven.
Yes.
Okay, so before, when when the school district was formed, there was a gentleman agreement made. So PSJA.
And this was how many years ago?
Uh, more than a hundred years.
More than a hundred years ago.
School district is a hundred and six years old. And so back when it started, they, we, we're a tri-city school district.
I remember when it was just PSJA and they were a powerhouse in the early eighties in football, I mean, they were good.
And so, back in, you know, when the the school district started, they made a gentleman's agreement that if you lived in San Juan, you could only run, so in other words, they separated the seats, because there's seven seats. So they separated by population and so if you lived in Far, you can only run for the seat in Far. If you lived in Alamo, you could only run for the seats in Alamo. If you live in San Juan, et cetera. And so it was a gentleman's agreement. And so what it did also is prevent you, if you wanted to run and the only position, you lived in San Juan and the only position that was available was in Far, well, you can run, because there was a gentleman agreement. You know, it was not, in writing is not, is not even legal, right? Because we're an at-large school district.
See.
And so, for many, many years, that stood, right? And people tried to break the gentleman's agreement. So four years ago, when I ran, obviously, I'm not a gentleman.
You're a gentlewoman.
So the deal, I was not part of the deal, right? But also, it allows for more people to compete. Far, San Juan and Alamo are smaller than Far. You know, so historically, people complained that Far has controlled, you know, the school district and, you know, the seeds.
Everybody has their own clique.
So I ran, I live in San Juan, so I ran a seat in Alamo. And, you know, and and I got so so much abuse and and bullying.
Hate.
You know, everyone wants somebody from Alamo, you know, and and I won the election. And so that goes to show that nowadays, people don't care about those, you know, deals that were made at the time, for whatever reasons they had. PSJA in a hundred and six years, when I came to the board, I was the, only the fifth female in the history of the district. So in a hundred and some, a hundred and three years, two, three years, you only had five women representing, you know, so so that's very concerning. Because fifty one percent of the population is is female.
And the teachers as well.
You know, and and the the teachers, you know, and so we have, we are three women now, so it's about eight women still, compared to the men that have represented our school district.
So it's a bit of balance now, right? It's a good balance?
Correct. And and there are two females running as well. They're in the opposition, but it's worth mentioning, because to me, it's it's about people representing, you know, people can go out and vote for whoever they want. You know, I I have become, I didn't identify as Democrat, but I am a moderate Democrat, you know, I have a lot of things that 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 I'm very conservative about. And, you know, and.
I think a lot of us are, Hispanics are like that.
Yeah, and so I think it's it's important to to understand that what we need is representation. You know, if we have female students, we need females to represent as well and as well as men. And I'm not saying that that we're better, but we are different and and there are different perspectives, you know.
And be pragmatic about your decisions, yeah.
Exactly, from the decisions that men may make and or are historically used to make. And 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 what women focus on. You know, we know that women tend to be, to be, not everyone, but more involved with academics, with the homeworks, with, you know, with the more emotional part. And men are more. And making sure that, you know, where are the buildings, you know, where, what construction going on and stuff. So I think it's important to have that balance. So that's what I was referring to when we talked about.
Yeah, about the gentleman's agreement a hundred years ago.
So I was the first one to break the gentleman's.
Well, that's awesome. Now, you were.
So now everyone can run whatever, which kind of like makes what I mentioned earlier, the old guard kind of nervous, you know, because it's like, you know, when when you try something new, but right now, we have people from Far are running in San Juan seats and, you know, and and we have a female that's sitting on the board.
It's one united district, right?
Exactly. You know, if we're one united district, why are we making that division?
Yeah.
And and separating, you know, the 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 cities.
Yeah.
You know, and and so you represent everyone. It's really interesting, you know.
Uh, one one last question, what do you think about the tests, you know, like?
Standardized?
Yeah, like, they 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 like spend so much time on preparing these kids for the test that they kind of like, do you think it 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 kind of hurts the rest of the curriculum of teaching kids other stuff?
I'm gonna give you my personal opinion. I think standardized testing does not tell us anything. You can be really good at testing, doesn't mean that you're good at life and solving problems, at social skills, you know, and or or that you even learned anything. Maybe you're just good at being able to discern what the best answer is, even if you don't understand, understand the concept. Because when you take those tests, you're trained to test. You know, find, you know, in the paragraph, the first line, you're gonna find the first answer to the first question. But then we have kids that are that are smart, that get nervous during testing and they're not passing. And then when we talked earlier about accelerating and and fast, the teachers have tremendous pressure to pass, to get their kids to pass, which in other areas, not here at PSJA, but, you know, other areas have there are teachers who have gotten in trouble and they, you know, they they lose their licenses, because they do things that are not legal. You know, because in the desperation to get the kids to learn. When I was a teacher, I was fortunate that I was coming from healthcare. I had just finished medical school. I had an accident, so I had to rethink everything because of surgeries and stuff. So I became a teacher. And I was under the no child left behind law.
Yeah, George Bush was.
Yes, exactly. And so it was.
That made teaching challenging as well, right?
Well, let me tell you that I came in and the first day, I was expecting, you know, the mariachi and the red carpet. And hey, new teacher here, because I was never a teacher before. And so I go in and it's like, here's your classroom, here are your keys. I go and I see all these classrooms with beautiful stuff. And my classroom was empty. And so I come to find out that the teachers paid for everything, you know, their posters, their whatever you want in your classroom.
And it's not tax deductible.
No. And then the kids, you know, you continuously buy things for your children, for your students, and you find yourself during the summer, I know that I'm gonna use it one day. And so I was blessed, because I came in not knowing, you know, anything about education. And so the first thing I learned, because I was a I was supposed to teach anatomy and physiology, but as it often happens in education, I was a teacher for the retesters, for STAR and TACs. So I had no idea what either one of, I mean, I knew it was standardized testing, but I didn't, I didn't know what to teach. And so the first thing I noticed that in the training, they told us is to do handouts. And so I find it boring, you know, so what I started doing is doing a lot of projects that were hands-on. And 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 helping the students to understand the concepts that were on the test. And that's earlier, when I was talking about sustainability, that's what it's doing for PSJA. It's only been a year. I don't know if it's gonna help, if it's not, but it's going back to the to the way we used to learn, back to basics. And so allowing you to make inferences, allowing you to, you know, to manipulate things, to learn on your own, on your own terms. And standardized testing, what it does, it kills your creativity. It kills your, your being different, because we're all different.
We are.
Some of us are weirder than others, because I.
Some are made for college and others are made to go become an air conditioning expert.
Correct, and they may make more money than the one that went to college.
Exactly.
Because.
The work ethic, it all depends on the work ethic.
Correct.
But every child is different and I think what.
So when you test everyone and you measure everyone by the same standards, you know, we're, we're leaving kids behind. We're leaving them behind, because second grade, you start testing, you're already behind, you're already labeled, you know, it it's it's gonna have an impact on you, because you notice, even if they don't tell you, you're not passing, you're not passing the reading, you're you know, because you get extra help, you know, and now you're different and you're separated from the rest. And and it has an impact.
He's not good at testing, but he can tear an engine apart and build it back up.
Yeah.
You know, but the test didn't tell us that.
They can read a hundred books and understand them and write you a dissertation, but they can't pass the test.
So what's gonna happen with the test? Is it, I mean, it's gonna continue, right? I mean, how 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 can it be changed? How can, how would that be able to be like?
I don't think the standardized testing is ever gonna change. You know, even with a revolution, I don't think it's, especially, you know, in in our state. I'll put it that way, you know, especially in our taste. I'll put it that way, you know, especially in our taste and in our uh state. But what we can change is the way we teach. You know, and and again, um it may not, you may not see results right away. But in school, what we learned, we didn't have all the technology, we didn't have all the books, we, I mean, it was limited. We went to classrooms that were cold and sometimes didn't know windows or
No tenía monique, sí.
Por eso.
Estaba esperando con los mosquitos.
Sí, y traía el maestro un abanico, un abaniquito, y te prendías el abanico y te querías sentar lo más cerca que se quisiera
Sí, para que se holen los mosquitos, no se metan a la nariz.
Exactly.
I remember those good old days.
Yeah, no podías hablar porque
Yeah, now kids got it made, I mean nowadays, they got air conditioning, all that good stuff.
That's why our kids are complacent and uh if we add all that comfort to boring handouts and boring, you know, uh uh modes of education, you know, it's detrimental to to their creativity and to to their education. So we're looking at sustainability at PSJA. We adopted the seventeen United Nations um Sustainable Developmental Goals. And we have a small department that's barely growing, but I can see uh what they're what they're telling us. You know, um we spend a lot of time pushing the test and strategies. Cause at the end of the day, it also, it's also tied to funding and it's also because, you know, it
That's what it's all about, right? The funding.
Because they wanna make sure that the teachers are effective. And so how do you measure that a teacher is effective if if the child is learning? How do I ma- measure if the child is learning if, you know, if I don't test them, so I'm gonna continue testing to see if you are effective. Cause that's, at the end of the day, that's what it is. We're not really, um the the test measures what the student is learning and and you know, what level they're at. But at the end of the day, it's a measure of how the teachers and the school in general is is um working. And so it affects everything, it affects funding because it also comes with uh all this extra monies that you can potentially give your staff if you are
An exemplary
You're rated A, you know, and so so I I think it, everything nowadays is about money. Everything has to come about money.
Yeah, Sinta, I had a blast uh meeting you and I think we had a good time.
I know. Yeah, this was a lot of fun.
Yeah, no, we could do it again.
Yeah, let me ask you one last question.
Okay, yeah, pero good luck, uh she's running, ladies and gentlemen, for reelection, PSJA School Board, place seven.
Correct.
Ladies and la doctora, cause she uh got her degree as a doctor in uh in Mexico and uh and now she's she resides here in Far San Juan Alamo. San Juan to be exact, and she's running and the election is on the fifth of November. But early election or early voting is starting on the twenty-first
On the twenty-first.
Of October, but uh it's a pleasure meeting you, you're a wonderful person and I can tell you have a big heart and uh you really care about the children and the kids.
I do and I really care about my community. Uh we didn't get it, I'm gonna have to come back some other time. We didn't get to talk about what I do uh at work, you know, public health, that's my biggest passion.
Let's do it.
Healthcare. And uh there there are so many things that 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 we've been doing with the I work for the city of Far, although I'm not representing the city of Far right now. But you know, we'll leave that one for another occasion.
Okay, yeah.
But again, I had a great, great time.
Yeah, this was an awesome little uh conversation. Sinta, God bless you, okay?
God bless you too.